Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our business meeting for the Patrick Medford Board of Education and the community on the 18th of November at exactly 7:30 PM. Would everybody please rise to the [inaudible].
[inaudible]
Ms. Leiva, can you please give us a safety message and ground rules?
In the event of an emergency, the emergency exits located at the front and rear of the auditoriums exit the building. Do not attempt to drive away as you may impede with the arrival of emergency services. Please be advised that smoking and the use of vaping products are prohibited by law on school property. When addressing the board during public comment periods, each speaker is limited to three minutes with no sharing of minutes. You will be warned when 30 seconds are left, and you will be asked to conclude after three minutes. Please refrain from discussing specific students or staff members. To protect their privacy, these matters should be discussed with the appropriate administrator. All questions or comments should be addressed to the Board of Education president.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to item number six on the agenda, which is presentations and reports. And first up, we'll be students under the supervision of our athletic director, Mr. Craco. We'll be sharing an update regarding Unified Physical Education.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the Athletics and Phys Ed Department, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, the Cabinet, and really everybody who helped support the vision for Unified. It's got off to a tremendous start. Happens to be the favorite part of my day, and I know the favorite part of some others, as you'll hear. So, thank you again. I'm going to turn things over to Sam Kearney, one of our students, who's going to be in.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Carney. I'm an 11th grade student, and I'm currently enrolled in the CTE Medical Program. This year, I was lucky enough to be selected to be a part of the Unified Physical Education class. This year, oh, this was very important to me because ever since my freshman year, I have been working in the high school reader express. And this year, I got the opportunity to be a part of the Unified School Sport class that teaches the understanding of customer service and efficient work ethics. Then I also had the opportunity to be part of the Unified PE class. Once I was selected for this Unified Gym Class, I was so happy to see that this program is still expanding. My experience so far has been absolutely outstanding, and this honestly has been the best gym class I've ever been enrolled in. I genuinely enjoy spending time and working closely with all of my peers. Being in a small setting has really given me the chance to build stronger relationships and really get to communicate with everyone. Seeing the smiles and the positive energy that these activities bring to everyone is the reason I do believe we should add on to Unified activities, such as sports, clouds, field trips, and classes. This experience has motivated me to want to participate in more Unified activities. For example, things such as bowling, basketball, and golf. I'm beyond grateful that I can be a part of this class, and next year, I definitely will be taking part again. I'm hoping that next year, there will be more Unified activities that I can get involved in because the ones we have now have absolutely been a success. I want to thank my gym teachers and everyone else here who gave me the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name is Matthew Bajahol. I play Unified basketball, and bowling, and golf. I have a lot of fun in Unified PE. I made a lot of friends in PE classes. My favorite thing to play is kickball.
Okay, I'm just going to share some of the information about our Unified Athletic Program, how Unified PE got started, and a little bit more about the program. So, in 2019, our district introduced Unified to our athletic program. Thank you to Dr. Lucas and Dr. Cox who made that possible. In 2022, we were recognized by Special Olympics New York as a Unified Champion School with the award and banner for our gyms. We expanded our program last year to include Topgolf and participate in the pilot that was offered throughout Suffolk County, where twice a week, we took a group of students over to Topgolf, they learned how to compete, and were introduced to another activity. The program's grown again this year. We'll be participating again for the second year. Last year, we hosted an All-Star event at the high school. It was a larger-scale event, 20-plus schools and over 100 All-Star participants from the basketball programs throughout Suffolk County were all represented. We had 85 students participate in Unified Sports this year. I anticipate it's going to be a much higher number this year because of the implementation of Unified Phys Ed and the students in the class. And last year, we also had our first, our very own Danny Kelly, who was introduced as our Unified Athlete of the Year to match the other student athletes in our athletic program. Quick little video of the fun that we have in Unified and Unified Basketball. And then, just a little introduction of what really Unified Phys Ed is.
UFIP makes you feel like you're a part of a group, that you're a part of a family or friends.
Everyone's my friend, gym class, everybody.
Unified gives everybody the opportunity that everybody is exposed to in the gen ed classes.
Welcome to Inclusion Weekly, a show about Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools. Students are working with Special Olympics to push for equal rights and opportunities for students with intellectual disabilities. Today, we're working at Unified Physical Education. Unified Physical Education is not your average PE class. Students with and without intellectual disabilities participate together in physical activities that promote leadership skills, emotional learning, and empowerment.
So, Gianna, what is it like in Unified PE so far this year?
So, I feel like Unified PE really brings everyone together. I love hanging out with you guys, so I want to hang out with you more. I want to be around you all day.
Oh, Donzo, don't be blessed.
I met really good people that I wouldn't meet if I didn't take this class.
Rex, what's your favorite mom's in Unified PE?
Knocking you out in basketball? Because you're not good at basketball?
No, I'm better.
No, I'm better.
Carry on.
I pair with Allison Stern. She's cool and friendly.
What do we always argue about?
The Chicago Bears and the New England Patriots.
What do I like?
The Patriots. Uh, not a good team.
Let's find out what happens in Unified PE class. What we do is like, we go to the dance room, sometime we have like a little workout.
Everybody with your partner. What we're going to do right now, jog in place, show me jogging place, everybody show me jogging place.
Unified PE here ultimately is not meant to feel that different. We have just naturally provided space for students to be themselves and to participate to the best of their ability regardless of whether or not they have a disability.
Students that are in this class genuinely like want to be in this class. It gives them a sense of belonging, a sense of purpose.
As you can see, Unified PE is a lot more interesting than your average PE class. Instead of all abilities are in it together.
UFIP definitely helped me. It hurts to feel excluded from things, so it's really special to me when I feel included.
It just teaches so many life skills. The more you can interact with as many people as you can, the more like you'll become a more inclusive person.
If you think Unified PE would be good addition to your school, talk to your teacher and administrators and see if it can be added next year. Also, visit generationunified.org and check back as we post more episodes of Inclusion Weekly.
All right, so this summer, we had the opportunity to create the curriculum led by Mr. Rolet and a team of Phys Ed teachers. We wrote units of instruction on cooperative games, team sports that included football, soccer, basketball, several others, bowling, which we currently have a Unified Team for, a fitness unit, net sports, as you can see in the picture from early this school year in the fall, the students were playing tennis, and a track and field unit that we plan on having in the spring. The feedback, so I'm not going to read each one of these quotes, but these were a couple of quotes from students and staff. And just to sum it up, right from the beginning of the school year, you know, the teachers started to come and find me, day one, day two, this is the best class I've ever taught, it's the best class I've ever been in, thank you for this opportunity. And then, students, had a ton of feedback from students about wanting to be a part of the Unified Programs, wanting to grow the Unified Programs and bring other sports. We actually were able to present to Section 11 about the possibility of adding Unified Flag Football as a sport and finding out a little bit more about the process to have it brought to the table. So, we definitely anticipate expanding and having additional growth throughout the year. Some things that, you know, we'd like to see is bringing UPE to the middle school, maybe bringing it to the older grades at the elementary level, expanding for some more sports, bocce, cheerleading, Flag Football are all ones that are being discussed. And then, some type of culminating activity, whether it's a field day or intermurals, where we could partner with a couple of the other schools that are offering UPE on Long Island to offer a full-scale event. And I know Mr. Brinkman is planning or plans to propose bringing a Unified Program to art and music. And then, we have a very exciting opportunity. We were asked by Special Olympics to apply for the National Distinction, which believe there's only been two others in the state that have gotten it, so that this will be our first year with an application submitted. We've hit all the criteria to be a national Unified Champion School. That's it for me. I'm going to turn things back over to the students to wrap things up. Brett Rapolo.
My name is Brett Rapolo. I'm a sophomore at Pat Med High School. I'm the starting quarterback for varsity football for two years. I was asked to participate in Unified Physical Education this year. It has turned out to be very fun. All the students can learn and play sports together regardless of their ability. I'll be participating in our second year of Topgolf and Unified Basketball. It is so nice to see the smiles on everyone's faces. We all work together to make it fun. It is different from regular gym class because you get to know more of your peers and make new friends. I find that some kids who have never tried sports before are excited and more confident now because they were given a chance. Plus, we have more of one-on-one understanding of the sport, and I can help and support anyone who is having trouble. We are all also increasing our fitness routine. I'm able to use my love of sports and leadership skills to work with my classmates and share this positive experience. I would like to continue being a part of Unified Physical Education class for my junior and senior year. We are making a difference every day. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nicholas Vallejo. I am in the 10th grade. I play Unified Basketball and Unified Topgolf and Bowling. I have a lot of fun in Unified PE. I love to play with my new friends. My favorite thing is to play basketball.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you again, everybody.
Wednesday, no, Wednesday we have the program of studies meeting. I said Thursday morning.
Wednesday.
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 Okay, moving along to our next presentation will be Eagle Elementary's teachers, Roseanne Moscatelli and Krista Denapoli will be sharing a student service report entitled "Supporting the Ronald McDonald House."
[applause]
Is he going to fix it?
We're getting a preview.
We're getting a preview of him.
My name is Krista Denapoli, and this is Roseanne Moscatelli, and we are here on behalf of the fourth-grade team over at Eagle Elementary. Presenting to you tonight are Eagle Scholars Amaya, Troy, Rory, and then we have Shane here helping us out along with their families. This is a math problem that turned into something a little bit more powerful and meaningful to us, and we hope that you enjoy the presentation tonight.
Welcome to our presentation. All the fourth-grade classes completed an exemplar on place value. It was our job to complete the amount of pop-tart. Pop-tart. Count collected from two schools that sparked our interest to learn more about what a pop-top is.
As you heard Troy say, everyone gets that wrong, and that's what really inspired us. I started saying pop-tarts instead of pop-tops, and so I needed to show my students the difference between a pop-tart and a pop-top. And once we Googled that, we found out about this wonderful program.
What are pop-tops? Pop-tops are small metal tabs on top of soda cans or any other beverages. They're made of a stronger metal than the rest of the can. Pop-tops can be found in almost all canned beverages. Some examples are Coca-Cola, Fanta, Coca-Cola Zero, and Sprite. Why collect pop-tops? Pop-tops are made of high-quality aluminum, and they can be recycled separately than the whole can. Recycling pop-tops helps save energy and resources for our community. Collecting pop-tops is a fun and easy way to help others.
Our community partner, Ronald McDonald House. Ronald McDonald House provides a place for families to stay. These families have children receiving medical treatments in hospitals. The Ronald McDonald House is like a home away from home. They offer comfortable rooms and meals for families. How pop-tops help families? We donate our collected pop-tops to Ronald McDonald House. They recycle the pop-tops for money. The money helps pay for room accommodations for families, food for families staying at the house. Our small acts of kindness makes a big difference.
So, right now, our program is geared towards fourth grade. We are going to run it out and have the whole school participate, and with 126 school districts on Suffolk and Nassau, we're hoping to inspire other students and other schools to also add, because in 2026, the first Ronald McDonald House in Suffolk will be opened at Stony Brook. So, we're really hoping to be able to support that and our community. Thank you.
[applause]
They just said it's the strongest metal.
Yeah, that is.
Roseanne, what's a can of those worth in dollars?
So, you need 200 pounds of pop-tops for $100, and that would feed a whole family for a whole day. And we picked it even though it seems like a lot to help the gap. It's something that students can really see and tell people when they're...
It's amazing, like, it's going to take a lot of work, but we're hoping to inspire others.
Yeah, very nice.
Okay, next up, number seven, a report from an ex-officio student member, Ellen McCann.
It's so great to see you all and welcome to the November 18th Business Meeting. I am the ex-officio student member of the Board of Education, and tonight, I will be discussing what has been going on in our buildings throughout November. So, as you've seen since our last meeting, Eagle Elementary's halls got spooky for Halloween, Saxon hosted a National Family Literacy Month Book Sale and Red Ribbon Day, Eagle honored Veterans Day, Bay Elementary held many field trips, and Tremont shares an experience with the high school, and we also have so much more. So, to start, on October 29th, Eagle Elementary held a spooky halls event. Over 40 teachers and staff members got dressed up in costumes to greet over 400 students participating in trick-or-treating. It was an incredible turnout with a lot of positive feedback from our families. Saxon hosted a National Family Literacy Month Book Sale for November. Their English teachers have created video book sales that have been posted on Parent Square inviting students and parents to select a novel for a shared read at home. They have purchased copies of high-interest grade-level novels in Spanish for their ELL population and will be hosting a red carpet reading celebration for each grade level in December. This is to celebrate the parents getting involved in the Saxon book shares, and parents will be invited to join in at school. Another exciting event at Saxon, during Red Ribbon Week, the eighth-grade students organized groups of classmates to go and speak with sixth-grade classes. They created posters and slideshows to present to the sixth-grade students to remain drug-free and to live a better life. They also crafted red ribbon pins to wear for the day. It was an awesome show of leadership, connection, and engagement. Back at Eagle, our second-grade dual-language began their first cross-linguistics lesson for the text "May Something Beautiful." On the English side, students collaborated in groups to complete a picture walk of the text they are reading in Spanish using the academic vocabulary specific for this unit. Also, Eagle teachers engaged in a PDP to discuss best practices for our ELLs with a focus on building background knowledge and front-loading vocabulary. Also, Eagle scholars honored veterans by participating in a school-wide project. Each grade level contributed throughout an activity equal to their grade level, with some students making eagles or red poppies, writing about a hero, or writing thank-you letters to our local veterans. The final product is displayed in the main staircase hallway for all to see. Way to go, Eagle. At Bay Elementary, the first grade recently enjoyed an enriching field trip to the Suffolk County Farm and Education Center, where students had the opportunity to experience hands-on learning about architecture, agriculture, and animal care. They observed and learned about a variety of farm animals, engaged in learning experience on wool production from sheep, and even had the chance to participate in feeding some of the animals. The day concluded with a scenic wagon ride, leaving students with memorable experiences and a deeper understanding of farm life. This field trip provided valuable experimental learnings that aligns with our curriculum What a night! Our Bay Elementary Harvest Festival was packed with fun, giving, and community spirit. Families brought non-perishable items for donations to the PMYCS, and we danced the night away with DJ Bezo and dancing robots from Grooveline, enjoyed treats from the fifth-grade bake sale, and got creative at the scarecrow building station. The leftover clothing were then later donated, and the costume contest brought out seriously awesome costumes, and everyone had a blast. Thanks to our amazing Bay community for making this event unforgettable. Tremont had an awesome experience with the high school Junior Achievement HS Hero Program last Friday. They taught grades 1 to 4 about financial literacy and did an amazing job. Tremont is also in the middle of our Family Literacy Month program in conjunction with the Pat Med Library. Staff from the library have been visiting classrooms to talk about the importance of literacy at home and promote families from coming into the new branch of the Patrick Medford Library. Continuing, the Bay PTA turned the school field into a cozy fall pumpkin patch, complete with festive decorations and perfect pumpkins for each student to pick and take home. Huge thanks to everyone who helped bring the pumpkin patch to life. It was an incredible day filled with smiles and fall fun. Also, Bay Elementary has launched an innovative tower garden program to inspire young green thumbs. The new tower gardens are the result of a grant drawn up by Bay teachers, Ms. Alex Wada and Ms. Christine Purcell. These cutting-edge vertical gardening systems are designed to engage students in hands-on learning about sustainability, nutrition, and environmental science. The tower gardens, which have been installed in Ms. Wada's first-grade class, Ms. Romeo's second-grade class, and Ms. Jackson's fourth-grade class, allow students to grow a variety of fruits, vegetables, and herbs using a soil-free system. This innovative approach only conserves water but also provides an interactive platform for students to explore the science of plants and healthy eating. Students have had an opportunity to participate in hands-on activities such as planting seeds, monitoring growth, and eventually harvesting their produce. Barton had an assembly entitled Ned's Resilience Ride, where students learned how to be champions at school and in life. They learned about never giving up, encouraging others, and doing their best. This was reinforced through storytelling and pretty impressive yo-yo tricks. This was reinforced through storytelling and pretty impressive yo-yo tricks. At South Ocean Middle School, on November 7th, they hosted a family support night aimed at empowering parents to actively engage with their children's education. During the event, parents received hands-on guidance in creating and navigating a parent portal account, gaining valuable insights into accessing academic resources and tracking the student's progress. To further support our community, they concluded their workshop with a shopping experience, where families had the chance to select gently-used cloth items and fostering a supportive and inclusive environment for all. The high school students had a great Puerto Rico Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute meeting, where they met students from across Long Island and learned about the meaning of leadership as young Latin students. The theme of this year's conference is perseverance and power of democracy. And lastly, congratulations to these three high school students on committing Division One. Olivia Lydell committed to Stony Brook University, Alexa Schiller committed to Long Island University, and Jaden Sherman committed to Duke University. Go readers. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ella. Okay, we're going to move on to item number eight. I'm going to hand it over to our district clerk, Teresa DeLeva.
You're welcome. Public comments on reports and agenda items. Please note that you're limited to three minutes without sharing your thoughts.
Good evening, Pam Peterson. So Thanksgiving is the month, I mean, November's the month of Thanksgiving. And those two presentations, we couldn't be more thankful for. As a mom of a child who is in that unified class, when Mr. Krakow asked last year, with Bella coming up to the high school and said, "I'm interested in doing this," would she be interested and would some of her friends? And I said, "Let me ask." And I asked her and immediately she said, "Yes, absolutely. I would love to do it." And so did many of her friends. Unfortunately, the program being brand-new and small, they couldn't have as many as they did. Every day, she has PE. She comes home and she's like, "Mom, class was great today. She's showing me videos and she's telling me how awesome this is." And her friends and how some of the other students now invite, they all were invited to a Halloween party. And, you know, she did have a quote, and she wrote that quote, and she means that quote. She loves it. She's met friends. Her and JoJo are here tonight, and the two of them, like, they love, love this program. And there's so much more to education than just math and reading and writing. When you talk about a whole child, that's part of it. And then you move on to the second presentation, where you have these children who are collecting caps to tabs to soda. And they're raising money for Ronald McDonald House. And if you've ever been in, if you've ever known anybody who's had to deal with that, Ronald McDonald House is amazing. They truly are. And those children with that presentation tonight, they were incredible. And I just said to Mrs. Cahill, if she doesn't mind, I'd like to bring it to council. And I think that we should definitely make this a district-wide collection, where we can raise money again. And it's those little things that matter. And I'm just so thankful that we had those two presentations tonight, because it reminds you of what really matters in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Okay, we're going to move on to number nine, the consent agenda. And I'm going to need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jennings and trustee Denofrio.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Any extensions? Consent agenda is passed.
Okay, number 10, there were no items removed from the consent agenda for a separate vote. Moving on to number 11, informational items, policy first readings. First one was 5118.2, admission of foreign exchange students. And the second was 6163, school library material selection and circulation. So that was for first reading. Action number 12, actions that arose out of executive session. Item L on the consent agenda, trip labeled R502753, was actually approved last month. So it was removed from this month's agenda because it's already been approved. Okay, and now we're going to move on to number 13, which is a superintendent's report. Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all of our trustees, to the deus, and to all that are present at the meeting this evening. My report will be brief this month. I just basically want to start by sending a super special shout-out to our varsity soccer head coach, Tim Travah, who was named the League One Soccer Coach of the Year. What an amazing accomplishment. And also, the assistant coach, James Kelch. He was awarded League One Assistant Soccer Coach of the Year. Senior Ryan, I'm going to say this, Lazaridis, was also recognized as Suffolk League Number One Player of the Year. These honors are a testament to the dedication and talent within our soccer program. So congratulations to all associate. We certainly will give a shout-out on social media as well. And we've already mentioned, Ella certainly mentioned the scholarship signings, which I was going to echo. So congratulations to our amazing students that have already signed in their respective sports and their respective schools. Our athletic programs continue to develop Division One athletes at an impressive rate, and we are very thankful for that. I also would like to shout out our principals, our directors, all our administrators for the amazing job they're doing with moving the community engagement initiatives all throughout the school system. You saw evidence of a lot of the work that we're doing just in the presentations. And sometimes, they really have gone over the top to celebrate community engagement and to get our parents involved at a higher level. So thank you all for your tireless efforts. And thank you to the teachers. There are so many teachers that are participating in that effort as well. And we appreciate all the work that you all do to move that agenda item forward. I'd like to wish everyone in the entire community a very happy Thanksgiving. We have so much to be grateful for. We're blessed to have a wonderful community, supportive parents, supportive stakeholders, all trying to move in the same direction. I couldn't be more grateful to serve as the superintendent of this great district. So once again, happy Thanksgiving to all. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 14, which is discussion topics. And we have a couple tonight. First, we're going to start with item letter A, grading policy. I'm going to hand that off to trustee Vice President Andrade.
So I don't know, Dr. Jones, if you want to address a little bit. I know trustee Jennings had, we know there's maybe some hiccups with the new grading policy. And just to communicate with the community, what are we doing to maybe evaluate a little bit so far what's gone on? And, you know, what we discussed as a board or asked that maybe we could take a look at?
Sure. So before I turn it over to Dr. Lucas and Mrs. Kennedy, I will say that this certainly did come up probably at our September meeting as well. And so we have, this has been very much on our mind for all of that time. We know that growing pains, there are growing pains with any new initiative. And the goal here is to provide equitable supports across departments as opposed to every teacher having a different philosophy for grading. That was the intent behind this policy. And so there are some things out there that need further clarification and certainly more support as we continue to tell, tell some more, and tell again as we get to grow and develop this new approach. We have not changed anything in the curriculum. We're just standardizing across departments. So with that being said, I would ask Mrs. Kennedy and Dr. Lucas to chime in. So Mrs. Kennedy first, and then Dr. Lucas.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I have handled a few parent phone calls directly to my office. And I will say, the one issue that I think I've been speaking to parents about is more about test correction and retesting. And, you know, I've been very transparent with the community. I think there's some inaccurate information that the policy says there cannot be test corrections, and that's totally inaccurate. And I have directed the parents to our policy, which really, if you look at our policy, it does very specifically indicate that test corrections are permitted. But I think what the message is, is that the policy says we can't do it. That's false. It can be done, but what we're saying, it has to be done consistently amongst teachers that teach the same course. That means regardless of who you have as a teacher, you have to be afforded the right to test corrections. So what was happening in the past is some teachers were allowing test corrections and some were not. We're saying, as a district, sure, you can have test corrections, but you collectively, as a group of teachers, must decide within that course if you're going to permit them. That is the discretion of the teachers to allow the test correction, not the policy. So I think that's really important for the community to understand. We are not prohibiting test corrections, but if one teacher is allowing test corrections in the course, it should not affect other children who may happen to not have that teacher, right? Everyone should have the right to test corrections then. It can't be arbitrary.
So if, let's say, there's 10 teachers and five, you know, five or four say, "We want test corrections," and six say, "We don't." Are we going majority here?
It should be the consensus of the department, right?
So then, okay, so then, but in the policy, it's saying we're allowing for it. And then the teachers are saying...
No, the policy says it is permitted, but the policy is very clear. It says if test corrections are permitted, but must be consistent between teachers teaching the same course within the same department. And it also says at the middle school level, test corrections have to be the same within all middle schools. Meaning someone at Saxon can't get test corrections, and someone at South Ocean cannot get test corrections.
So what was, so what's the consensus? Are we doing, like, what is that?
It was decided, this was decided by teachers. And it's posted on our website very transparently of what each course has decided. So I posted that for transparency, so every teacher had to meet collectively. And I will not disagree with you that if there are 10 teachers teaching a course, there may have been eight that didn't want test corrections and two that didn't, right?
So do you have a list right now in this moment of what course is...
Yes. It's under parent information on our website. It's under grading policies. And I think that also went out in a parent square at the very beginning of the year, directing the parents as to where they can find that information. So if you look, in addition, the board did ask that I put some examples of some assessments that parents were confused as what constituted a summative and a formative assessment, right? So I did put that as well. So if you go onto Parents, under that tab, there is another link that says Grading Policy. It has our grading policy. It has the letter to the community. And also, it has a little summary of every course and what they decided if they were going to allow or not allow. So that is all posted for our parents. Additionally, teachers were told to review this at back-to-school night with parents and also post on their school ag page.
Can I ask a question too? I had a question about the number of assessments too. Was that agreed upon, or is that also...
That was in the policy. So one of the things we did, that policy doesn't talk about a max. It talks about a minimum. So we specifically in the policy wanted no one test to count more than 20%. So you could not have a test that was weighted so heavily within a marking quarter that it could cause you to not pass that marking quarter because a teacher only gave one or two tests. So within the summative, that counts as 50%. So they had to have a minimum of three.
A minimum of three.
Minimum of three. And in the other category, it had to be a minimum of two because that counted as 30%.
So, and this is what, I'm coming a lot of, you know, concerns about this. So five assessments.
Within a marking quarter, yes.
Within a marking period could encapsulate 80% of the grade.
Yes. And then there was the 20% for discretion for each department. And then our homework policy says no more than 10%, right? So there was that homework policy. I think five assessments sounds maybe too little, too much. There were some that we were finding where we were only having three assessments within a marking quarter. That was the average of what the teachers who sat on our committee felt was the average of what a typical teacher would...
Five, you said?
Within a marking quarter, yes. And some may give more.
I think that's what some of the concerns of the parents is that, you know, for some student with test anxiety, 80% is relying upon, you know, five assessments, which if there's, you know, say there's something going on at home or, you know, whatever, that does affect a good portion of the grade, and I think that's a large concern.
And I think the word "assessment" is where parents need to understand that assessment may not be a paper-and-pencil test, right? So I think it is important for parents to understand that a project is an assessment. Writing a, you know, research paper is an assessment. So typically, when we think of the word "assessment," I think oftentimes, parents think it's a paper-and-pencil. But we listed a plethora of examples of what constitutes an assessment, and many of them are not paper-and-pencil tests.
In theory, correct. I agree. But I don't know if it's being executed as such.
Right, and I also think, sorry. I also think the assessments are short. So if some can have like a five-question test, you get two wrong, your grade always goes down. So I think that's a concern too. It's not like a regular test like back in the day with 20 questions or 10 questions. It becomes like a three-question test, a five-question test. And for anyone who has the test anxiety, and I have that. So for me, I would, what am I, fail that test. And I think that's where it's also coming into play because the assessments are so short, that's not giving the students the opportunity. And then that leads into the test corrections to help them.
So I think that's a valid point. And I think that's one thing I heard specifically, I will say, in our ELA classes. That is the only content area I have heard about, like exit tickets, like three questions. So if they get one wrong. And I've spoken to Mr. Hanley about that. And we've spoken to the teachers about that, right? So that's something that we can correct. I will say, I have not, and we have not, ever dictated to a teacher how lengthy an assessment can be, right? There are a lot of teachers who would give three, four-question quizzes. That hasn't changed in this policy. But I do think within the ELA department, specifically at the middle school, I will say, I did receive some phone calls from parents about the exit tickets with our new Savvas program. And we've made some changes very specifically to that for the next marking quarter. That was the one area only that I heard from parents about these short quizzes. ELA in the middle school with the Savvas exit tickets. I have not heard that, again, I'm just speaking to the parents who have contacted me directly. That was, I received about three phone calls specifically to that. That was, I received about three phone calls specifically to that. And I have spoken to Mr. Hanley, and I know that there, he, he met with the teachers, and we're making some changes in that.
Have we done an assessment as to comparative grades at the end of first quarter compared to last quarter?
I know the board asks for that, and I'll be prepared to give them to them at the close of the marking quarter.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to have that in Friday's update, the comparative.
How, so I just, math just comes to mind because I don't, to my knowledge, we don't really do project-based learning in math or...
Do a lot of exemplars, which is something new that we introduced to the middle school. But I would agree that math is probably the one course that's a little bit more traditional in their assessments.
Do you know overall, I don't know if you have memory, is that a subject that the teachers agreed to do, test corrections or...
Actually, that's probably the one department that is probably, I, I don't have it in front of me, but that's the one department that probably felt test corrections were the easiest to give. I think, you know, in some departments, I think like, as I shared with the board, I think in ELA, test corrections was not something that typically was done in ELA because you're writing a lot. So in the writing process, you're naturally getting feedback to the students. So it's very hard to say, "Oh, you just did a research paper, and now you can do test corrections on a research paper." It tends to happen throughout the course of the writing process that we're giving feedback to students so they could enhance their research paper. I would have to look. I have it up right now. I have to put my glasses on.
I just, I mean, for me, the benefit, I'm sorry, the, of, you know, test corrections just in general is to increase the, the learning, you know, of what, what we did wrong, what we need to correct, what's the right answer. I mean, there's so much.
There, there's benefits to test corrections, but I will say, going back to this policy, there are many teachers who've never given test corrections, never. And I, and I think the board needs to understand that. Test corrections were given in some classes. And I think I, when I shared with you the feedback we got from teachers about, "Tell me what your current practice or policy is for grading." There were some teachers that allowed test corrections, and there are some teachers that never allowed test corrections. Students would tell you that. And I think students would also tell you, they knew the teachers who gave test corrections, and they knew the teachers that don't give test corrections. And typically, when you're going to make a schedule, what teacher would you want? You would probably want the teacher that allowed test corrections, right? And we're trying to say, doesn't matter who you get now, it's gonna be the same.
I understand that. I just think that there's, if you ask students, "Which class would you learn more?" You know, I know my, my kids would say in a class that they were able to have those test corrections and go over what they, you know, so they know what the right answer is.
Well, then our policy would have to say that you must give test corrections. And that's a little bit different than what our policy says. Our policy still gives the responsibility and the final decisions to the teachers.
And, and I will say the teachers are in the trenches. So encouraging them to talk amongst themselves and come to some collective agreement is certainly worthwhile. What I don't want to see happen is depending on what teacher you get and what philosophy they have relative to that, that some will benefit, depending on which teacher they have, and some will not. That would, that would seem to be inherently unfair. Based on who you have, there would be an advantage. And obviously, everybody cannot be assigned to one teacher versus another. And so the intent of this deep dive into the grading policy was to rectify that such that no matter what teacher you have, there would be, there would be an equitable approach to the grading policy based on the teacher's discussion and coming to a departmental decision.
And I also want to point out that I've spoken to the directors, and I have shared with them. If at the end of a marking quarter, a group of teachers within a course had originally not wanted test corrections and now do, that's fine. As long as they communicate that to the students, we update our chart, and that everyone has access to it. So just because they decided not to have test corrections in quarter one doesn't necessarily mean they can't change it for quarter two as long as there's consistency within that course. So this is conversations teachers have to have. The policy is not prohibiting them from doing it. They're prohibiting themselves from doing it if they chose to as a group. And I think that's the clarification I'd like to make.
And I would like to recommend...
We've been trying to get them.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am sorry.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that Diana, I pulled it up while we were talking, and the math does, is, like Ms. Kennedy said, there is a lot of yeses down the test cor... It goes by columns, so it'll, it says corrections, extra credit, and they're all side by side. And it goes down by course, and the math ones are very heavy with the test corrections.
My only comment is, I, I understand that the, the, the logic behind the need for the change in the policy. Is this conversation premature in that the grades haven't come out yet?
I, I would say so. And I would say that after receiving that first quarter, both to share with the board, I think it would be wise first to also share with each of the departments and for them to discuss it and for them to consider making some changes based on how students fared compared last year to this year. Now, there may be some changes just based on a decision to, to make the same protocol per department. But then we can also look and see what teachers have experienced in their own classroom setting, given this change. Because for some, depending on what teachers decided per, per course or per department, it may affect them one way or another. So having those conversations, which would take place relatively soon because the marking period is just about over, and we would share it with the board, we would share it with the departments, with the directors, and they will use their PLC time to workshop that decision.
And if we find something that something just went absolutely haywire, we'll be able to adjust it or remedy.
That's exactly what policy is for. We could always come back. I think it, just to, trustee Krieger pointed out the high school. Again, you could see in the high school, many of our courses, Algebra, Algebra II, allow a certain number of retests and a certain number of extra credit. So that particular department is much heavier in those two areas than maybe other content areas. But again, it, it's by department, and the trustees can go down and look very specifically by department. But I think it's important to understand, you know, we didn't want to take, we didn't want the policy to dictate to teachers. We wanted teachers to determine what was best for them. But we did want the policy to give parameters. And I think that's really important for consistency. So if a department feels like, "Hey, we originally thought we didn't want test corrections, but now we do," change it. That, we don't need to change the policy for them to make that change. They can decide that.
Right. And I understand that the, the parents are anxious because, yes, we want, we want the teachers, the professionals, to be able to set what they're doing in their classrooms, but the parents are feeling agita around, "I thought I understood how these grades were working. Now I don't understand, and is harm being done to my child and their grades?" Especially, I would imagine, the kids that are at the higher levels.
And again, myself and Mr. Tulen have had many conversations about this. And it's hard to come to consensus, right? That's not something we've typically asked them to do. But I think it's very important to say, everyone has the right to the same thing regardless of who they get on their schedule. And that's what we were truly trying to do within that policy.
Thank you. I think we have a comment down here too.
I would also just like to add, I've heard a lot of concerns from students regarding the weighting of formative and summative assignments. For me, having an 80% weighting of the testing, it puts a lot of pressure on the specific assessment, whether that's the project or the test. And leaving the test corrections up for discretion for the department sometimes gets a little hairy as a student just because I feel like it puts more pressure on the literal test-taking, and it kind of eliminates the learning experience post-test. For me personally, I feel like I learn the best after I see my mistakes on the test, and I'm able to either gain bonus points for making those corrections or gaining those bonus points from learning from my mistakes. I feel like once you put it into kind of up for discretion by the teacher, it kind of eliminates the student experience of learning post-test and learning from those mistakes, if that makes sense. I feel like I learn better when I do worse on a test, and then I can grow from that. And I think that is very helpful as a student.
So I, I love that, and I appreciate that feedback, so thank you for sharing. One of the things we can do is we can survey the, the students and then share that back with the teachers because the teachers need to hear the voice of the students. So one of the things you spoke about was the fact that you don't want to leave it up to the teachers. The thing is, it's always been up to the teachers. That has not changed. And I think that's really important to know. It's, retesting has always been at the discretion of a teacher. So, but I love the fact of maybe we need to get the voice of the students, and then we can share it back to the departments to say, "Hey, this is what you decided as a department and as a course, but here's the voice of the students. Should you want to consider making changes, it may be something you want to consider as a department and as a course." So maybe me and you can work together and maybe craft something, and we can promote it to the students.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Else are we good with that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going to move on to the next discussion topics, which was the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association and the BOCES updates. And that's going to be discussed by trustee Jennings.
So at Nassau Suffolk, we talked about, a little bit about just the regionalization, just that there's no new updates. But something that people really wanted to look into is really that maybe it could help with finding changes in Part 154 and maybe finding some changes or other things in special education. There's also, we heard from the Nassau and the Suffolk superintendents. One thing was the Nassau was saying that we have to brace ourselves because we might not have. The state aid is not looking good for next year, so our budgets might not be so great, and it might be a tough budget season. And that, once again, a special edut, education audit will be coming because all districts will be audited in special education. Just to kind of, really, they're just requesting more like paperwork just to kind of see how and your documents are in place and where's a specific place that maybe you can go to get those documents, especially when you're sitting at like an IEP meeting and people are advocating or just looking for things. So that's mostly what they're looking at. The SC, the state ed is revising their compliance and accountability, and they're looking at some new accountabilities for them. And then the new thing is, they did a handle with care, which is law, some law enforcement's in doing it. I know Lars from Hampton Bays is going to pilot it. And a handle with care is when the emergency might go to your house, for our student's house, and then they will alert the school. So if, if it's like, almost like a traffic light, it's like red, green, or yellow. If it's a major trauma that happened at a student's house, then the law enforcement can contact the school and then say, "We've had a red," so that when that child arrives to school, they know what services that child may need. So that's a new thing that they're, I know Suffolk PD is kind of rolling that out. But it's more or less that also Southampton Police is the one who's piloting it right now. And then Sheriff Tulen wants to kind of do something in that specific area. And then, I don't know if we want to do this at like another time because these slides would make great to like do for the community. But in terms of the blue ribbon, the, they had their regions meeting, and they kind of came out with the rollout for, not quite yet, but will be for the pathways to graduation. There'll be four transformations. One is to adopt a New York State portrait of a graduate. Two is to redefine credits and learning experiences. Three is the sunset assessment requirements. And the fourth one is move to one New York State high school diploma. So there's different ways that they're gonna roll it out. So there's different phases. So Phase One is the planning year, which is now from the fall of 2024 to the summer of 2025. Phase One is the installation. So all this is not going to start until 2029. When those ninth graders start in 2029 is when these pathways to graduation will be fully implemented. So Phase One, it will be the installation is the fall of 2025 to summer 2027. Then Phase Two is the initial implementation, which is fall of 2027 to summer 2029. And then the full implementation and scaling up would be fall of 2029 plus. But I was just thinking of, is there a way that we could like... Yeah, like a special session that the community can come to explain all this and put the slides up because I think that'd be a better way to...
So would it be, would it be helpful if it's a work session that's already scheduled? And that be an agenda item?
Yeah, because I think, I mean, for a special meeting, we don't really have the community ask questions, and the community might want to ask questions. So I think it's a way to, if we're gonna present to the community, I think the community, if they have questions, we want to be able to get their feedback also.
So do, do, would you like us to have it more like a, we could do a virtual where community members could join, or we could have it in person? Is there a preference?
I think in-person is better, as much as like, like virtual. I think virtual is hard to get the questions and the answers and see people for it. And then not many people pay attention virtually sometimes. So I think it's better to have it in-person. This way you can put the slides up here, and whatever slides are really important, and really talk about each phase. Because each phase has, like, they all have money attached to it, which is coming out of SED budget. But like Phase One is like 20, like 2.4 million. And then it keeps going, you know, up. And I think that's what the community needs to see in order for them to know what the new pathways and the portrait of a graduate kind of is.
So, okay, so I guess what I could do is certainly work with the district clerk and trustee.
This is definitely something elementary school parents really should see because it's, that's really the kids that are gonna roll up into that. So I don't know if it's through PTA, maybe we could figure out how to get it out too?
Yeah, because it's like, I mean, like I said, there's a lot of information on each slide, and just to explain it while seeing the visual rather than just...
Kellyanne, I, I had the, I was also on that presentation. It was really well done. Do we know if it was recorded? Does it exist on YouTube?
The regions meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, you can go to the Board of Regents and they're, it might be on YouTube, but I know it's definitely on their, their website.
On their website?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we did it in person, we would record it and have it online for everybody who couldn't come.
We could do that. We could definitely do that. So there, there are a lot of things that we need to think about to make sure that we do it the right way, that will provide the most community engagement and be the best way to be informative, even if it requires us to do it more than one time or if we do it at the district level and then building principals are empowered with the information as well. So if you don't mind, I would recommend that I meet with the cabinet, talk about what would be the best way and provide a recommendation to the board on short order. I know December is a very busy calendar, and typically it would be difficult to get the, the draw of folks with all the different commitments going on. So probably sometime in the new year shortly.
Would it be useful or helpful to announce the link or put the link somewhere in some kind of parent's square?
We can do our very best to...
And we'll do another one live.
Yeah, to get the word out in a lot of different ways, between social media and parent's square and announcements and reinforcements with principals and directors. We can definitely do that, but I think, I would recommend January as opposed to December. We can definitely do that, but I would recommend January as opposed to December.
Yeah, and I would also, Dr. Jones, a lot of what they presented, there's not a lot of granular detail to that. So I think we just have to be very, you know, cautious in what we're, you know, we're presenting of what is happening. But there may be a lot of questions that we may not be able to answer at this point because the state hasn't really clarified to us a lot. There's a lot on the table of the changes, but not that granular detail that sometimes parents are looking for. So happy to share with the community of what we've received so far. I just, you know, want to caution everyone that that granular detail, which is so necessary, we have more questions than we do answers at this point.
Right, they made that very clear, that like this phase here is what we know. And then these phases, we, this is the outline, this is the framework of that three phase. But we don't know what's exactly going on in that phase.
What it's going to look like, right.
That'll be dependent on what happens in the previous phase.
And I think it just dispels, if we do this, it kind of dispels the myths that go abundant with, you know, now where BOCES is taking over all the schools, we're not going to have school districts. And, you know, that is perpetuating upon itself, so if we just say this is what we know, we can kind of know what we know and know what we don't know.
And I will also talk to ZE to make sure that I get their feedback as well as do the best way to deliver this message.
Thank you, everyone, for that conversation. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports. It's item number 15. We're going to start with Buildings and Operations, which is trustee Ms. Krieger.
I am still not used to being first. Okay, so we met on November 7th at the district office. We spoke about the, we went over the beginning rules of the year, review of committee changes, duties, expectations. We had a great presentation from Mr. Noonan about the summer updates, as well as the bond projects and then the Bay Elementary School capital project update. We got to see slides. We talked about taking a field trip to actually see some of the work. We had to table a lot of what we had on the agenda because this took a lot, a lot of time. I wanted to let everybody know that if you go on our website now, there is a tab that says capital projects on the top. And you can, there is a tab that you can see all of that work that was presented in there. So we could see, and also, it's a report of, Frank, do you want to explain the report? Because that's more your forte.
Yeah, the tab that she's referring to is going to be a spot for the community to be able to click on and see the advances that we're making with these two prominent projects, with the bond and the particular right now, the Bay project. So right now on there are timelines that we've been, have been established as we work through this with our architects and our construction management company. Just as a quick thing, you know, we've had meetings ever since the bond vote in May, we've been having meetings every other week on this and we're moving faster than expected and it's wonderful and plans have been submitted to SED. So it's just really to keep the community in the loop as to what's happening. There's no real fun pictures yet for you to see, but I expect within short order you'll see things because we're moving up and starting work in, on Bay by the summer. So starting to see things happen by June or early July. And then likewise with the bond, we might be, some things might be happening even a little bit ahead of that. So a lot more to come, but we're going to use that as a convenient spot for the community to quickly click on it and gather some information in an easy format.
And our next meeting will be Thursday, December 12th at 4:00 PM in the district office.
Thank you, trustee Krieger. Up next is Finance and that's trustee DiNofrio.
Yes, we're going to schedule a meeting for January. Again, as Mr. Maisy said, there's a lot of pieces that we're putting together, so we want to have a good, full agenda and not just a review of the information that's on the website. And again, just so everybody knows, we're very transparent with all the financial information, which is placed up on the website every single month. So it's not just a review of that, we really want to have some topics and Mr. Maisy's working on some of those items right now. So in the December meeting, we'll have an actual date that we can give everybody, but it'll be sometime in early January.
Thank you, trustee DiNofrio. Next up is District White Technology and that's my committee. I have a number of things to go over. We had a meeting on November 13th. We spent a good hour and a half or so going over some information. First was, we discussed the website redesign and got some feedback on that. Right now, it looks like Mr. Cahill and his South Ocean students are putting together some promotional stuff to launch it for the district. So it's a collaborative with Mr. Cahill and his students. They're also looking at working with Schedule Star, which is a special scheduling program for the athletic portion of our website, where when there's active changes, it's in real time. So if a parent signs up and they have an athlete that plays volleyball and there was a change in the start time or a location time, they would get a notification. So this is going to be a very, very good component of the website when it comes to athletics. And they're looking to have, as soon as they can get that underway, that's when they're going to launch the whole website. So James said sometimes the end of December, beginning of January is what they were looking at. So that's, that's great news. All right, so next we talked about project updates on our technology software, as well as hard materials, which included E-Rate is, we're in a five-year cycle with them, which they help support communication updates with school districts. Right now, we're in a five, the second five-year cycle and the first one, there was a $1.2 million amount of money that could be spent where only 20% of it would be funded by the school district, which was in a neighborhood of $240,000 where they funded $960,000. And then what we did in that is we used those funds to upgrade the internal cabling and install the wireless networks in the district. The second phase, the second project with these funds, the projects are now currently being used to replace all the networking switches at the high school, as well as the core switches, which is at the end of life. And the next project with the remainder of that money will be upgrading all the middle school switches as well. So there's a lot of stuff going on with technology to improve communication throughout the district. The next thing we talked about was instructional application usage and licensing. As you know, we have many different apps that we use as a school district with our students and teachers. There's certain things that are being used and certain ones that aren't. So they're going to review all of those and which ones we're going to keep and which ones we may not use anymore and use whatever money saved in that audit to possibly buy more applications that are maybe even more beneficial. Following that, we talked about the biggest thing in the world right now is artificial intelligence. Gina Marie Lombardo presented a beautiful presentation on the technology that the district has purchased, which is called Magic School, which is engineered to support schools specifically. It's school-based learning. Magic School has safe filters on it to help filter out some and all inappropriate contact, content. Teachers are being trained on the usage of the application. It has not been enabled for students yet, but will roll out and be trained more as teachers get more comfortable with it later on. Magic School offers more tools that would be helpful to teachers, such as assistance with differentiating lessons and lesson plans, assistance with rewriting text to assist students on different levels, as well as altering assignments and assessments to support our English language learners and students with disabilities. So that's moving forward as well. We talked a little bit about digital AP exams. James, Mr. Rich Roth said he's working with Mrs. Kennedy to schedule time to provide a training to support session for AP teachers. Device insurance, the laptops and computers that the students are now. Around 600 parents have purchased insurance for the students. It benefits the parents as it protects the device, no matter how old it is and incidents or issues not the student's fault are not charged. The district repairs and replaces the malfunctions that are out of the student's control. As far as Wi-Fi is concerned, the students have the ability to join the wireless at the high school in specific locations to help coordinate rides when they're staying after school and for school activities. And at this point in time? Want me to say that again? Okay, no, I know you're kidding. Yes, but they're working on that and those of you that don't know, I know Mr. Rich Roth is working with the major carriers to try to improve cellular service in the district as well. So there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes with that communication issue between parents and students during the school day. Our next meeting will be on February 5th and look forward to sharing that in the March meeting. Thank you. Okay, next is extracurricula. That is trustees Vice President Andrade and trustee Jennings.
We didn't have a meeting yet. We have one this week, Wednesday, November 20th at 5:15.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, extracurricula, I just did that one. So instructional and support, that would be?
Salazar.
That would be you.
Thank you. All right, so our last meeting we had was on November 14th, last Thursday at 4:30 in South Ocean Middle School. We began our instructional committee meeting with a, well, obviously, review of our last meeting. We were asking about the CTE programs. So luckily enough, Mr. McLeod had a nice presentation on our CTE programs. He discussed all the programs that include accounting, cosmetology, early childhood development, computer technology, law enforcement, clinical medical assistance, construction trades. And this was fantastic presentation, kind of shed a light on one of the big strengths in our district, which is training kids. A lot of other districts do not have these programs in-house. Especially, you know, the new one that we are very proud of is our cosmetology program. We took a look at all the new things that we developed into the high school and the new room, the cosmetology room. I think this is especially important and we all discussed that it's especially important, especially with the rollout of the new pathways. It seems like there's going to be a more widespread need of, I guess, skills that are going to be necessary and this kind of lends itself to that, which is very important. We also looked at the future, where we're going to go from here. And we discussed two programs that we are looking into, Natural Resources and Engineering. We also talked about how we are associating ourselves with local entities such as Stony Brook, LAU, and Northwell. Once we finished that presentation, we moved on to looking at what we're going to do for the remainder of the year, establishing goals. We had a discussion on cell phone usage and how that is affecting student education and what, how we're going to roll out the new policies of no phones in school and what effects that's going to be and what are our options. Once we finished with that, we moved on to what's going to look like. Well, one of our goals for this year is going to be examine the elementary school report cards. We are looking to maybe create a supplemental section to articulate progress, creating more narratives on there, so that we have a better idea, our parents have a better idea of growth if they're students. Another thing we are also looking into is obviously the pathways and how that's going to be affecting us as well. Our next meeting will be December 12th at 4:30 downstairs, the South Ocean Middle School conference room. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Salazar. Legislation is the next committee and that's chaired by trustee Smith.
Okay, so we met on November 7th. We reviewed the new results of the election, all of our representatives, none of them changed, the local ones. We talked about the cellular concerns. Mr. Rich Roth had had a follow-up meeting with AT&amp;T reps and they didn't, it really wasn't a lot, new, a lot of new information. They recognized that the cell concern in Suffolk County, specifically Medford, and they're continuing to make network upgrades to support improvement. Lisa provided us an article related to the institution that with Long Island Tower partners to look into leasing a piece of land and putting a cell tower there. And then Dr. Cohen shared some information with James that he's going to investigate further and we're going to look into that, see what we can learn about that. Legislator Thorne has indicated that he is taking a bit of a personal interest in driving by some of the smoke shops that we're concerned about. There is some action in that area, which hopefully will be good. We talked about the foundation aid and the funding increases that are needed. I spoke to Doug Smith's chief of staff a few weeks ago and learned that they're expecting the report on the foundation aid in December from the Rockefeller Institute. They're going to, and the foundation aid formula will be reevaluated, but it's very clear that the governor is determined to make some big changes in the way that's working. We're continuing to try to advocate for changing the poverty level. The federal formula for poverty is very low, the ALIS level is much, much higher and based on the cost of living within each community. So if we can, if we can get that forward, the, with the way funding is allocated, that'll, that'll help us when funding is cut, because it's going to get cut. We talked about the legislative breakfast so far in Longwood on February 1st. So far, attending is me, Dr. Cohen, Sharik, Stello, and Pam Julian Peterson. We will be talking. A nanny, thank you.
And Peggy.
And Peggy, Manny and Peggy. Thank you. Peggy, thank you. And then the charter schools, we really feel strongly that we need to start writing some letters about that. The way the charter schools are approved is often, New York State Ed will deny an application and then the charter school goes right over to SUNY and SUNY approves it. We're trying to advocate for one entity to add, to approve the charter schools and that would be New York State Ed. Because they're having to work around, it's just, it's not helpful. The zero emission buses or the natural gas buses. At the last legislator's breakfast, there seemed to be universal bipartisan support to try to delay the timeline for this, for implementing of this. See what happens with that. And then we shared the New York State School Boards Association adopted positions document with the rest of the committee. Our next meeting is going to be on, so far, it'll be on December 4th. And that's that. I'll talk about the other one later.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Okay, we're going to move on to number 16, community comments. Ms. DeLeva?
When addressing the board during public comment periods, each speaker is limited to three minutes with no sharing of minutes. You'll be warned when 30 seconds are left and you'll be asked to conclude after three minutes. Please refrain from discussing specific students or staff members. Please state your name and address when you come up to the podium.
Yeah?
Hi, good evening. My name is Erin Kelly Connell and you asked for what else? I'm sorry?
Your address.
Address 164 Fordham Avenue, Medford. And you just talked?
Yeah.
Hi. First and foremost, thank you, Dr. Jones and all of you for dedicating your time and your support and everything you do for our children. I've been in this community for over 20 years and I can't tell you what a blessing it is. I have two children that go to the Patman School District, one is neurodivergent and one is neurotypical. I've been extremely happy with the different resources and services and the different initiatives that have been set forth within this district and I can't say enough positive. The one thing that I would love to bring up tonight is bullying. I know we have so many initiatives throughout the district that cover so many different areas and different facets. And the one thing that I'd love to see focused on more is the bullying that takes place within our schools, not just with the standard interactions that the kiddos have, but especially in middle school and high school when our kids are accessing Snapchat, taking pictures of our kids, non-flattering photographs, and then posting them on social media such as Snapchat, making incredibly horrific comments and really affecting their self-esteem. For those of you that do know me, I am a licensed and board certified behavior analyst and a big part of my job and my role in my field is to promote kindness and to help the people that I work with from birth all the way up to adulthood to be their best selves. And I take that philosophy with me, not only as a professional and a leader in my field, but also into my life as a mother. And I promote that at home and I teach my children to be kind and to have empathy. And I teach my children to go to school and just be a good human being. And what, I'm coming here tonight and I came here last minute. good human being. And what, I'm coming here tonight, and I came here last minute because I left a sport outing with a child that is now having somebody attend sport outings just to go to school the next day to make comments, poor comments about the performance of other players. And then children are now coming that are not supporting kids at the sporting events, and, for example, taking photos or spreading news the next day and sharing this information with other kids. So I guess what I want to ask is, what can we do more for our kids to make sure that they understand the ramifications and consequences of engaging in not only standard bullying, but putting it into other forms such as Snapchat? How do we prevent them from A, accessing their phones, B, from using Snapchat, and also putting accountability on the parents? Because as we know, there's only so much you can do as educators and those overseeing our schools. There needs to be more accountability on the parents to say, hey, if your child's not a certain age, they do not have access to Snapchat, and if they engage in social bullying on Snapchat or these other mediums during school hours or regarding school content, the consequences need to be delivered. So I guess I'm coming here as a parent last minute, just having it up to here, with not only hearing about the bullying that takes place with some of the children I personally know, but also when I'm in different Facebook groups and I see, you know, these parents sharing their stories. And it's horrific. Being in my field, I see the mental health crisis that we have and the behavioral health crisis, and I work with children that engage in self-injurious behavior such as cutting. I work with children that engage in those comments of lack of self-worth, and my job is to reframe that and tame that and get them to think in the positive and focus on the beauty of what they have to offer. So I'm just asking you as a mom and a professional to see how we can come together yet again to put forth another initiative in Pat Med, because I know you're strong in this area. This is not my strong suit, but I'm more than happy to volunteer my time and expertise to come into the district and provide free workshops, anything for teachers, kids, just to promote kindness. Amen.
Thank you for your heartfelt message. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
I just want to thank you for that heartfelt message. We do a lot in this regard that you may or may not know, but it's never enough. We have to tell the kids, tell them again, tell them some more. We have had the police department in to speak to children, because everything that you have said is just so absolutely true. And we can never do enough because the, the, the things that children are dealing with and exposed to and how bullying presents itself today, and today's age is very different than when we went to school and we were younger, because social media was not a thing. And it is cruel and vile, what we see on a regular basis, everything that you've said, and then some even more unimaginable things that play themselves out in superintendent hearings. And so we do need to do more, and I would like to make sure that we do have your information so that we can explore that maybe through our SCL committee. That might be a way, but I want to think about it some more so that we can really work on this, because bullying is definitely an issue that we are continually trying to, to figure out ways to explore, ways to address it. But thank you for that message. It is definitely well-needed.
Erin, as PTA Council President, I would like to also, for us to join together and, and start, because that is something that was discussed at our Suffolk PTA Region meeting this past week, and it is one of the number one concerns. So if we could maybe put something together and maybe move forward with that, with the PTAs and the SCL and everything.
Yep.
I'd like to, you know, get involved.
Pam, don't you have a council meeting tomorrow night?
I do. That was Suffolk, so I, you know, it's just like, that's all district. But yes, I do have a council meeting tomorrow night, and, you know, of course.
I'll be there.
Yeah, okay. The only other thing is that the, again, there's a conflict in the meetings. Building and operations is the same day and night as instructional. And last time it was legislation. So it's just difficult. I'm trying to be everywhere, but I can't be.
Just to comment on that.
Yeah, you can.
Mr. Maisie and I talked about it, and the calendar is so tight in December because of all of the meetings and the concerts, and there just really was no way to, we're, we're really trying to separate.
Yeah.
Everything so that we can get everybody everywhere, but this month is just a little too tight with the two weeks off.
Yeah, because last time, we had our headphones in for the Zoom for legislation while we were at buildings and operations, and we're just trying to, you know, do what we can. Okay, so I want to address the grading policy, and I understand what you're saying about test corrections. And Ella, as an educator myself, I a hundred million percent agree with you. Test corrections, if not even for grade, are important for, for a student to understand what they got wrong and to learn from it. So that should be a given, even if it's not graded. I did sit on the instructional committee. The concern that I'm hearing from a lot of people is not so much test correction and retesting, although that did become an issue with, with teachers that I heard at the high school, because some were able, some wanted it, some didn't. And some had to, you know, we do want teachers to be able to be themselves, but now some of them had to concede to do this, which, which is, okay, that's fine, but anyway, the, the concern was the 80%. So I understand, I sat with you, I, you know, between the summative and the formative, but it's not, it's not being assessed that way. Like, one might be quizzes and the others tests. At the end of the day, it's 80% of a few tests. In addition, and I do understand, you know, where, where it was discussed, that it was, it was looking to be consistent across the district. But the same way you had your three students up, so now you have, you know, three students in three different classes, you take a test, like Diana was saying, so you take a test where you have 10 questions, you have a test with 20 questions, and depending on the course, you know, you're, you get a couple, you get three wrong right away, you know, you have a 70 here, and then here you have an 85. I know, we cannot dictate to our educators the type of test they need to give, but the 80% is where I'm hearing a lot of feedback, especially with parents of juniors, because they're concerned about college. And now this policy, you know, these tests are now 80%. Exit tickets are part of classwork in most classes that I'm seeing, so that's 10%, and that's a pretty, you know, pretty fair. And homework. That's just, that's the feedback that I'm getting. I, I know what you're speaking of. It's just difficult, because as educators, everybody does have their own way. And I think what you were trying to steer away from, unfortunately, is still Mr. So-and-so, Mrs. So-and-so, like, they all have their different ways, and if you have someone who has a different test than the other. And I'm not saying that they should all have the same tests. I'm just saying that what our initiative was, was, you know, it's, it's not, it's not as equitable as we were hoping it to be. So I do think maybe, you know, we, in the instructional, we should reevaluate this, and like you said, survey the students, survey the teachers again, and, and maybe we can reevaluate this again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lauren Kuban, 146 Rizley Road. How you doing? I just wanted to talk just really quickly about the grading policy. My kids aren't quite there yet, but they'll be there soon in the middle school. So I asked this question when the, when this was being presented to the board the first time, so I think I know the answer, and based on what Pam just shared. But am I correct that within departments, tests are not, they're not the same, they're not giving common assessments? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, sorry. That is correct. As part of our district improvement plan this year, we did ask each department, there were certain departments that they had to create one test that was the same within the course. So we're trying to start to go into that direction. I know that was something that trustee DiNofrio had mentioned last time. It is a Herculean task to, to make, you know, there is, we spoke, I think, at a previous board meeting about just, you know, the test security, you know, you give a test first period, if you have them eighth period. So there's a lot, but we are trying to move to have some assessments that are common within each department. I don't think we'll ever have all assessments, because I think we want to still give teachers the right there, but it is, it is a balance, and we're, we're trying to move at least partially in that direction.
Okay, because I do understand having equity, but if you're not giving the same assessment, you're making it very difficult for teachers, because if I'm a teacher who gives a review sheet that looks just like the test, and I offer extra help two times that week, I might not want to give test corrections. It may not be appropriate to give test corrections. And you may have another teacher who has a harder test and feels, hey, I want kids to have the opportunity to do test corrections and learn from their mistakes. If you have one policy that's for the whole, and it might be based on tests, teachers may look and say, this test was really a lot more challenging than the one I gave four weeks ago. That one didn't really need test corrections, but this one might. What you're doing is you're taking that, that ability of teachers away, and what will happen over time, and I'll say it, because I'm a teacher, but I'm not a teacher here, so I can say it where they can't, the tests will get watered down, because if you're a teacher and tests are 80%, and you have parents calling you complaining that their kids are failing, over time, the tests will get watered down, and our kids will all do great, will be really happy that they're doing great, but what are they doing great on? And so it's really, really important that when you put a policy like this in place that you get it right. With the percentages, the way they are, you could have kids that never do any homework and still do fine, and then you could have kids, I have friends who have kids right here at Saxon, who say, my kid has never missed a homework assignment. They've turned in every single classwork, and they have a 68%, because the tests are just so heavily weighted. And so you're really going to discourage the kids that have to work the hardest, and the kids that always do well are just going to, you know, they may act more lazy. There's really, like, where is the incentive there? But if you're not giving common assessments, I really, really think it's very hard for teachers to say, we're not going to give test corrections, or we are. Sometimes it's appropriate, and sometimes it's not, and I think it would be better for teachers to have more time to sit, talk. Maybe their tests aren't exactly the same, but they're looking at each other's tests and deciding together, yeah, you should be able to give test corrections on this test. Or maybe we have different forms of the same, of the same test, or, you know, there are ways to do it. But I think to put a policy like this in place when we're not even close to common assessments is really just like spinning your wheels. And I certainly hope by the time my kids are in middle school that the tests aren't just, everybody does well because teachers are exhausted from having parents calling them and complaining all the time. That is what will happen if you don't get it right. So, thank you.
I do, I appreciate, and thank you for that feedback. I think one of the things I would like to share with the community and the board, it is important when we talk about that 80%, that that was an arbitrary percentage. We actually surveyed the teachers within our departments to ask what they were using for percentages within their grades currently. So that was not something the committee just said, oh, let's make it 50%, let's make it 30%. That was driven by data that we actually surveyed teachers to say, give us an idea of what your current grading practices are. And typically, the majority of our teachers, up until this policy, that was kind of what their weighting was, so we were trying to be in alignment with what typically was. I think what I'd like to share with the community that I think this policy is very transparent. There may have been times that parents didn't even realize what the percentages were within the courses. We're being very transparent about grading now, which I think is why it's in the forefront of many of our parents and our students, because I've been very deliberate in saying to teachers, you must communicate this, you must communicate it, I'm posting it. I don't think that has been in place, and I think that's what's causing a lot of attention to it, because we are being very transparent. And I love the conversations and dialogue around it. That's exactly what we wanted. So I appreciate your feedback, and also Mrs. Peterson's feedback. And again, we go back to committee. Maybe that's something with trustee Salazar, we have some goals, but maybe we add that as yet another one as a subcommittee. So we're not, you know, not focusing on other things, but maybe there needs to be another subcommittee. So I really appreciate all the comments from the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Bobby Cologne, Medford. I too, wanted to bring up the grading policy, only because I did sit on the committee. I am a parent. I am employed, so I see it from all different aspects. I think you're correct in saying that the grading policy is very similar to what it had been in the past, and I guarantee you, I have two high school-age students now, that if I look back through their folders, that I would see their syllabuses, because I'm crazy. And so it's probably about 70%. So I think we raised it on the assessments a small amount. It is stressful. I've noticed, though, it is a factor in how their grades are being affected. It's not so much, like, just the test, like, there, I, I just was looking, as you were talking about it, going through that part, and as a parent, I didn't see the breakdown in email of, you know, or the Parents Square message of each individual class and where they're offering or not offering. But of a lot of the kids, my kids' classes, they're not offering test corrections, they're not offering extra credits. So what they get is what they get. So they need to put in the time, which I try to make sure they do. But they should be held accountable. But there is something to be said that, again, going back to the tests, and I don't want teachers to be forced to do something that, you know, like, that the next teacher is doing. But when it comes to tests, like, if one, one teacher is giving, and I've had my kids come home with tests themselves where it's 10 questions, and we all know, if you don't do well, then you're not going to come up with a decent score. So it is a concern. I know it's something we worked very hard on, you know, to make it equitable across the board, so it's not just, like, we put a lot of time into this policy. So, but it is something that I think we do have to revisit and tweak a little bit, but it's just, it does need to be addressed. The other thing I wanted to ask about, not necessarily related to the grading policy, is last year I had mentioned about the laptops, and I know we talk about the insurance all the time and the cases. I know that there was some discussion, or I just had a conversation with somebody within the district about the laptop cases and how they like to have the hardcover ones, because I know a lot of the kids like to take their, they don't want to carry the backpack strap kind, so that the hard cases is more efficient in keeping the laptop itself safe. But again, it goes back to, they're expected to have a charger, have it with them, carry all these things. And I can see it throughout the building that, you know, it's a struggle with binders and laptop and cords and, you know, headphones and whatever else. So if they don't have that particular kind of laptop case to hold it in, it's a lot of stuff to carry in addition to their regular books. So I just would like to revisit that if possible. And then, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments? Okay, we're going to move on to board comments. So I'm going to start down at the end of the days with trustee Salazar.
First off, I'd like to thank our presenters today. First presentation with the physical education was fantastic. Those kids were, it was great to see their perspective and how it's affecting them. That was wonderful, as well as our next presentation with our, the Coke cans and the bottle taps and the Ronald McDonald House. It's great to see our young people up here, helping their community. We've seen that time and time again, and I think that just goes to show, you know, what we're doing here is a good thing. And I think I just want to wish everybody a, have a happy Thanksgiving, and that's it.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Krieger?
I just echo what Mr. Salazar said. It's always great to see the students and the progress that we're making, not only within our district, but within the county and the state. This, if you could imagine, this place seemed like, it was packed and it seemed like a club. They were dancing in the aisles and screaming and cheering. So it was, that was a great event. So I hope we can see more of that on the other schools as well. And just enjoy your short break and have a great Thanksgiving.
Trustee Smith.
I, last week had the privilege of presenting Champions of Change Awards on behalf of New York State School Board's Association to Baldwin's School District, two awards, it's very cool. Also, I went to the Medford Civic Association meeting a week or two ago where, just to learn about the, there is a, the building, the spit of land across the street from Tremont Elementary has been purchased, and there is a builder wanting to put, want to develop it. So they presented that, and I went there to learn about that and a bunch of other stuff happened. But the Civic Association put together a very nice little thing, points, and mailed it. Couple of things have been coming up. Mr. Maisy and I have been talking about how to get better noticed by the town as to things that are coming up within our school district, like how do we get information about things going to be affecting school, our buildings, things that are being built too close? How do we know about this so that we can have an opinion? Mr. Maisy, do you want to talk about what you know about this building? And then I'll read the points from the Civic, and then we'll ask the board what they want to do about it.
Yeah, I was able to find some information on the town's website. As Trustee Smith had mentioned, we had a, you know, information's not so easy to find. We did ultimately uncover the information of the plans. They have a rough schematic of what it's supposed to look like, although no specific businesses have been proposed at this time, although I believe they share with Trustee Smith some of the ones that they're not considering. Because, you know, obviously, you know, having something this kind of close proximity to our schools, there are certain types of businesses that we are, we want to make sure that we're not going to have in close proximity for obvious reasons. And the Civic Association did communicate that in their, in their letter. It doesn't look according to what we can see in the plans, that it would be anything like they wouldn't be accessing any traffic onto Tremont Avenue. But certainly we know that the ins and outs onto 112 could create somewhat of a, of a impalement of the traffic flow. But like I said, they're not as forthcoming with the information as we would like. They seem to take information from us, from what we've learned in our few encounters, that they'll take a letter from us under advisement, and they use the quotes. We don't really know how to get action from these yet. So that's something that we're continuing to work on with them.
Yeah. So they're trying to put that, you can't see this, but it's a shopping center that will take up, I think it's like four to six units of buildings. The builder, the owner builder said that they are not interested in putting a convenience store in there. They are limited by law as to what they can, certain businesses cannot go in there. Anything cannabis, a smoke shop, alcohol, adult, anything can't go there because it's literally 30 feet from a school. So that's very clear. Some of the concerns that popped up was there is a, they call it a catchment basin, I grew up calling it a sump, and that should be about 15 feet deep that will occasionally fill with water. I'm not thrilled with that. This is kind of the, you can pass that down, that's kind of the look that they were looking for. They're entitled to build what they want to build because they own it and they're very limited to what they can and cannot. And the guy seemed to be aware that he's building close to a school, which was appreciated. But the last minute, how did, why, that we had to learn about this from a civic association, and I learned from, this evening from Mr. Maisy, that the, this will be talked about at tomorrow's town board meeting. So we're trying to figure out how to get noticed better rather than hiring somebody to keep an eye on everything that the town of Brookhaven is doing. So what the Medford Civic Association, their concerns were the stormwater management with the, oh, seven foot, my error, seven foot deep stormwater sump on the parcel. And they have a very nice little gazebo next to that. The driveway access is one driveway access on 112 across the street from the car dealership, I think. So there's one in and out because they don't want to go out on the side of the school, which is fine, except that's a traffic problem. And we asked Mr. Foley about traffic study, and he said, his opinion, if I'm paraphrasing this correctly, his opinion was he'd never seen a traffic study say, no, don't do that. The building facade, they're looking at this kind of stuff. I don't think we have a say in what they want to put, what it wants to look like. And they are, and they are restricted by what they can and cannot put in there, a bar, a billiard hall. So I wondered, do we want to write a letter? If I can get there, I will, I can pass all of these pictures down. You want to look at them? Nope, has them that way. If we want, I will write a letter or show up tomorrow at the Brookhaven Town Meeting and just say, hi, this is us and we have these concerns? Or we can just let it go and try to get, try to find out more on the next one?
It'd be great.
Okay. So I'll go, I'll find out what I can learn and if we have any input, and well, I'll write a letter and email it to y'all tonight, and then we'll see what y'all think. Is that okay? Huh? You have to have a gluten-free restaurant across the street.
They're showing a baguette shop, Harris Baguettes.
I think they do want to put like a coffee shop or something, things that the teachers will love. Like some kind of coffee shop, bagel something or other would be great. But he did seem to be mindful of the fact that it's a school across the street and we don't want to put anything in. They did a nice job, what I thought, of landscaping all the way around so there will be shrubbery all the way around to shield the school. But that's what I learned. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Bernadette.
Yeah, I guess the question would be the, the volume of what they put in there as a shop.
They're zoned for 80 parking spaces, they can only fit 78.
Yeah, that's a lot. I mean, that's kind of crazy for that little triangle.
That's what they're going to ask for.
Before, I think it was just a bridal shop or something like that, and wasn't that much traffic in the building that exists. I mean, I know, I know the former owner, there was never a lot of traffic, so, yeah, I think if we can go down and, you know, be heard, I mean, that's, that's hard enough, but, you know. Is Neil trying to help?
No.
Okay, all right, we should reach out, yeah. And Donna, what's the rule? I mean, certain, certain distance from a school, the school should be advised. Were we ever advised?
I'm not aware of this one, no.
That's a violation right there.
During the civic meeting, Mike, oh God, what's his name? Michael? No, Michael. LaGarcia. LaGarcia. Said that the, that some of the schools are noticed sometimes. I'm like, well, I, I mean, that's, that's not helpful. But he didn't have an answer as to, and then when we questioned him about how quickly they had changed the zoning for the cannabis shop up in Medford, he had an answer that was not great.
Trustee Denofrio, anything?
I'm going to get back on the kindness wagon and then not, not beat that thing up, but that, that does need some attention. No, just nothing really, it's getting late. Again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Enjoy time, you know, with your families and, and it's not a big break, but it's a short break and.
It's a break.
It's a break, and we'll take it.
Trustee Jennings.
Sure. It was great to see the students present. It's great to see the work that they're all doing. Like I said, the talent show here last, last Friday was awesome. Like I said, you kind of felt like you were at a concert every time they sang. The people in the back were singing too. And then this Friday, we have the Spanish musical, so hopefully people can attend that. Last year, it was really awesome to see them kind of come out and it was a great performance. And then just happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your time with your family.
Trustee Vice President Androtti.
Just happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Okay, I'll finish up with first, I'd like to echo what my friend, Mrs. Peterson, said about being blessed at Thanksgiving time to see those two presentations and see the children present and be in love with what they do. But they do what they do because of what the teachers do every single day to ensure that they have a place to learn, a place to be happy, a place to find themselves and express their thoughts. And they, the teachers, are supported by their administration on a daily basis. So it's a team concept, it's a family concept. Everything that happens, happens because everybody works collaboratively. And I couldn't be more proud to sit up here with our cabinet members that ensure that the teachers and the administrators have everything they need to be able to be successful, but more proud to be able to work with the people to the left of me on a daily basis. I mean, it's every day, you know, whether it be a text message or a phone call or an email, we communicate every day on the behalf of this district and we are proud to do it. And with that all being said, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and understand that everything we do is for the children in our community and their parents. So, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, maybe?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.